I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, 6:00 PM Thursday, November 14th, 2024. I want to acknowledge we've got some special guests with us tonight. We have girls and troop leaders, maybe a couple of parents with us from Girl Scout Troop 3168. We've got some Daisy Scouts with us, some Brownie Scouts with us, and we're going to ask them to assist us with the first item on our agenda tonight. So, girls, if you'll come up and join us here at the middle. First item on our agenda tonight is we have a moment of silence, and then we're going to ask the girls to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So first, we'll have a moment of silence. All right, girls, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. The girls have actually spent about the last hour with us asking questions or trying to earn a civics badge, and so we appreciate them coming out and visiting with us tonight. All right, Michelle, next on the agenda, we'll have a calling of the roll.
Councilperson Azar, councilperson Bowlin.
Here.
Councilperson Chalos, councilperson Demone.
Here.
Councilperson Dinkle.
Present.
Councilperson Hinton.
Present.
Councilperson Lattimil.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Councilperson Thompson.
Here.
Seven are present, two are absent.
I received communication from Councilman Azar and Councilman Chalos that they were out of town tonight. Uh, Michelle, next on the agenda, we have 30 minutes of public comment, uh, 30 minutes of time allotted for public comments on items that are not on our agenda tonight. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and try to stick to items that are germane to council business.
My name is Donald Wayne Hyde, I live in 1411 Public Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. It's interesting you say, what is germane to council business? To me, the city council's job is year-round, and that any single day, anytime, in any year, something could come up that you're not aware of, but suddenly it becomes council business. What I'm going to talk about has nothing to do with anything but the fact that the President of the United States got elected when I didn't want him to be, but that's called democracy. He gets elected. But he's already caused you guys problems you're unaware of, and I can guarantee you in the next four years, it will be on your agenda more than once. Somehow, someway, he thinks he managed to get the abortion issue redone, and abortion's become illegal again. Uh, I think he's a little giving himself a little too much credit for that, it was going to happen anyway. I'm 70 years old, and I was around back in the early 70s when they made, uh, they decided to make abortion, uh, legal, and hell with it. And that's what I meant when I said the heck with it. That's what they did. They couldn't come up with an answer to the problem. They debated it for several years, though I was in the, I listened to the debates when I was younger. I know they debated it, I was there, but they could never come up with a good answer for it. So they said, well, we'll just make it legal. Everybody that didn't want it to be made legal was upset about it, but they couldn't do anything about it. It was part of the Constitution. Then Trump come along, he came up with a brilliant way to put in a couple of Supreme Court justices, and by one vote, they managed to overturn it, and it became illegal again. At that point, just illegal. And all 50 states were told, do something with it. Well, Indiana had the bright idea to be the first state to make it illegal again. Whether I agree with that or not, whether you agree with it or not, that's not the problem you're going to have. It's the battle that you're going to have about abortion. When is it alive? When can you do it? When can't you do it? Can a parent be held responsible for having an abortion, whether she wants it or not? Because the doctors tell her, if she doesn't have the abortion, she could well die with the kid. By the way, that's a little thing they don't talk about, that I was alive back then, and there wasn't a month that went by where I didn't hear on the news that a mother died giving birth to her kid. Most of the time, the kid died with her, but occasionally, the baby lived.
Mr. Hyde.
I got a point for this. I'm, I'm getting to it.
Your three minutes are up, and I've hesitated to interrupt you.
All right.
But when I say germane to council business, what that means is things that council can vote on. We will never be able, as a council, we all have our personal opinions, but we will never ever at this council table be able to vote on something that will impact what the state or the federal, or decisions made regarding abortion. So I appreciate, I appreciate that you commented.
And I'll be honest with you. I'll, no, I'll be honest with you. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that did not sign the list wish to make public comments? Public comments?
Yes, good evening. Richard Shagley, uh, resident of Terre Haute. Two things I'd like to do. Uh, first, I'd like to point out that James Belmar is here, and he's a senior at Terran North High School, and he made the state finals in tennis this year. And I thought that was pretty awesome. Now, two seats to his right is a young lady who is simply amazing. It is my daughter, and I will do everything I can not to embarrass her because I told her to come here tonight, uh, and I told her, um, but she changed her mind, but she's still here, but I, like I said, I just don't want to do anything to embarrass her, I just wanted to recognize that I think my daughter's pretty awesome. And, uh, uh, thank you very much.
Can we talk to her about her dad?
Yeah, she should have three minutes now.
Right. Would you like to rebut? Would you like to rebuttal, Ellen? Thank you. Thank you all for being here, and congratulations. Thank you, Richard. Or any other public comments? This time, I'll close with comments. Michelle, correcting the journal of the preceding meeting.
There are none.
Communications from the mayor?
There are none.
Reports from city officials?
Good evening, Council President Bowlin and members of the city council. I'm Jesse Tohill, your Director of Public Works. I am excited to share some of our key accomplishments from 2024, as well as the opportunities we're looking forward to in 2025. Uh, 2024, first, let's look back on some of those concrete achievements we've made this year. Um, you know, I'll start with the major cleanup events. Those were pretty widely circulated, and we promoted those quite a bit, and for good reason, and to a good result. You know, so we hosted three large, multi-site cleanup events, the, and included a major graffiti remediation project on the Margaret Avenue overpass. Hopefully, you've been by there to see sort of the before and after. These efforts resulted cleanup-wise in 104 tons of rubbish collected and almost nine tons of electronics recycled, uh, you know, making a visible positive impact on our community's appearance, um, you know, and not to compare ourselves with the past, but I do believe that's about twice as much cleanup in terms of tons of rubbish compared to past cleanups. Um, you know, and for these efforts, I would like to extend a big thanks to Vigo County's solid waste management, the city of Terre Haute code enforcement, street department, Terre Haute wastewater utility, um, our, you know, single maintenance person here at City Hall who, you know, we spent some Saturdays during the cleanups, actually going around and, you know, picking stuff up out of the alleys. He was always on board and game, and he is really supportive of our cleanup efforts. Um, you know, and also thanks to our many volunteers and citizens for helping make this possible. You know, because of our partnerships with volunteers and citizens, we really minimize taxpayer costs, you know, while maximizing the benefits to the community. I'll talk about 3-1-1 very briefly. Um, you know, so through the first nine months of this year, we've received over 10,000 requests through our 3-1-1 Citizens Contact Center. Of those 10,000 requests, about 95% of those have been addressed and worked to closure. Our team has been able to work through nearly all of these requests. You know, I think that shows great responsiveness and commitment to improving our community. So I want to talk about some small sort of quality-of-life projects that, that I, for one, sort of, saw an immediate opportunity, you know, because sometimes it's the little things and the details that get overlooked as you're looking to fund and you're working on big projects. One, for example, as I, I live up by Collet Park, and there was sort of an abandoned driveway approach, um, up in the 12 Points area, and over the last two or three years, this abandoned driveway approach, you know, I think there used to be a dentist's office or a doctor's office there, it's, it collapsed, you know. So first, it started with like a traffic cone in it, then it was a traffic barrel, then it was like a couple of traffic barrels, and, you know, by the, by the end of it, you know, it was a small pond. So, you know, pretty quickly on, I was looking for small sort of quality-of-life and environment improvements like that. So leveraging our internal skilled labor, you know, we completed several of these quality-of-life and environment projects. That includes that curb restoration there in 12 Points. We also completed a curb sort of restoration at Woodlawn Cemetery. We cleaned up several abandoned homeless camps along the Heritage Trail, uh, and, you know, first, I'd like to point out these were abandoned, but also, um, the state of some of these areas along the Heritage Trail were just unbelievable. And it could be 10 foot off the trail and just, you know, the, the foliage being so thick, you wouldn't even have known that it was there until you sort of got into, into the woods and looked. But we did several of those cleanups. And then also, we tried to stay sort of flexible with how we approached sidewalk replacement and repair this year, and I'll give you an example of that. About a month ago, Habitat for Humanity built two houses over on Third Avenue. Well, during construction, they, somebody did a number on the sidewalks out in front of these houses, you know, and it's kind of a little late in the game to point fingers and figure out who did what. They reached out to us, we moved a little bit of money around, and so when those houses are dedicated to the new families in December, they'll not only have new houses, but they'll have good, um, working sidewalks. You know, we didn't have to replace the whole sidewalks, but there were sections that were busted up, and so they're good to go there. I don't know if, previously, I worked for the city as the sewage billing department supervisor. I haven't, you know, been able to detach myself from that job completely, so I'm actually currently serving as the city's utility, utility billing specialist, and my primary responsibility in this role is to review consumer appeals and to report to the Sanitary Board of Commissioners. But additionally, I collaborate closely with, you know, with that office to ensure that revenue collections remain consistent and efficient. So over the past year, the Sewage Billing Department has undergone, undergone several personnel changes which could have potentially impacted revenue collections. However, just by the implementation of, you know, diligent processes, you know, maintaining clear communication within the department, uh, the department was able to maintain a collections rate of about 94% at, at that 30-day mark, which is fantastic. Um, you know, I, I equate paying your sewer bill to paying your taxes, um, so, you know, 94% is good. I would like to see, you know, even better than that. We rely heavily on our Terre Haute wastewater utility to help us with some of these quality-of-life projects, so I fully support keeping them well-funded. One significant customer service improvement that we implemented in the Sewage Billing Office this year is that we are using our own in-house high-water use notification letters. So these letters go out monthly to inform owners of a property whenever there is a significant increase in water use. It provides them with important information on what to do to mitigate a potential leak, and it prompts them to take immediate action to resolve the issue. This added letter, you know, will, has only cost the city the price of postage to send the letters, and those in council that have been around long enough to hear some of the stories about water leaks in, in houses, creating large sewer bills, and then they kind of go unchecked for too long, can truly appreciate that change. So as far as the Board of Works budget goes, uh, the total revised budget for the Board of Public Works for this year is about 82% spent as of November 8th, 2024, and given that we are about 87% through the calendar year, we are projected to come in under budget. Duke Energy, property and liability insurance, and workers' compensation accounted for about 1.51 million, or 84% of the total Board of Public Works 1.79 million budget. So, moving on to 2025, you know, looking forward to 2025, 2025 holds some promising new initiatives that will benefit the community in very tangible ways. Number one, January 1st, 2025, Terre Haute Transit will go fare-free. You know, starting the 1st, we'll be implementing fare-free transit across the city. So maybe surprising to some of you, only about 5.4% of our transit revenue actually comes from traditional fares. You know, you hop on the bus, give them a dollar, and search for 75 cents somewhere. That only accounts for about 5.4% of, of the revenue total in 2023. About 13% of transit revenue was received per contracts with Indiana State University and Ivy Tech, and we are grateful for that partnership. Still, about 80% of Terre Haute Transit's revenue came from state grants and federal formula-based funding. We believe by making transit fare-free, we, we expect to see increased ridership for working, dining, and recreational activities, which will not only strengthen, strengthen our standing as it relates to formula-based funding, but also boost locally collected taxes such as food and beverage and local option income tax. This initiative will also help reduce parking strain in popular areas, and let's not forget how important opportunities to socialize, recreate are to maintaining mental and physical Our hope is that our transit system becomes a major transportation asset in the city instead of an afterthought. Additionally, when we review the success of this initiative, we believe there will be clear and convincing evidence to support extending fare-free transit into 2026 and beyond. So 2025, another initiative that, that we need to think about is our pet licensing. So on average, the city receives about 1,000 pet animal-related service requests each year just through 3-1-1. That's not in, you know, counting any other routes that request may take. Yet, only 1% of pets in Terre Haute are currently licensed. So in 2025, we're setting a somewhat ambitious goal of raising that percentage to about 25% license, just because we maybe needed to pick a number. So, you know, to achieve this, though, we will need a robust marketing campaign and may even consider a type of pet census to collect up, to collect updated data citywide. With direction from the mayor and city council, our current code authorizes such a census to be conducted every two years to keep records current and guide policy. So in conclusion, 2024 has been a year of impactful community service and dedicated projects, and with initiatives like fare-free transit and pet licensing improvements on the horizon, 2025 promises to build on this momentum. Thank you all for your continued support and commitment to making Terre Haute a better place for everyone. I'm looking forward to an eventful and impactful year ahead. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Or try at least.
Counsel, any questions? Councilman Nation?
Jesse, I think it's, thanks for the report first. I think it's a really, um, big deal that there will be free bus rides for everybody all the time. And as somebody who's tried to use the bus in the past, I, I wonder if there will be any kind of improvement of the signage systems about where bus stops are, other ways to communicate with the public about how to use the system that we have.
Absolutely. There's a lot of collaboration going on right now on how to do those exact things, you know, better inform the public on how to use public transit. Um, yeah, we're working on, on, on several smaller projects that'll support fare-free transit for 2025.
I, I am a big user of public transit when I visit other communities around the world, and one thing that I always notice when I look at Terre Haute's system in comparison is that for somebody who doesn't have a smartphone or isn't, uh, doesn't know where to look online, we, you might not even know that there's a bus system here unless you saw the bus roll by. So my specific question, or I guess, piece of input is, we need more signs. It needs to be apparent that there is, out in the community, that there are places that, you know, you can stop and wait for a bus, and those places need to say what time you should expect the bus to come by, or at least how often it runs and what days, and those very basic pieces of information have always been missing here, in my observation and experience.
I agree, Councilman Nation, and, you know, I didn't really add, um, that transit's been an afterthought, just to take a jab at it, but I, I agree with your sentiments that, yes, um, we need to really invest in public transit here, both from a workforce standpoint and, you know, fiscally.
Do you anticipate it going to places that it doesn't go now? Like, is there an expansion, or is it just?
You know, that would be more up to the MPO and the studies that they conduct, but, right, we're, we're open to suggestions.
I hope that my comments don't sound critical. What I really want is for us to succeed at getting people to use the buses more, and I think that offering free rides is probably a very good way to do it. Thanks for helping make this happen. I yield.
For sure. Glad to help.
Anyone else? Councilwoman?
I just wanted to publicly compliment you for working with residents on those bills and those water. I had someone who had a layered situation, and Director Tohill has been very good and patient about making sure information is being sent to him, and he lives at a distance. He lives somewhere else, and his parent lived here, and there was a house fire, and the parent died, and so he's the person, but Jesse's been very good about responding to him, and even though you had two emails and one. One's working and one is not, so, but when, when you guys connected, I appreciate that. I had no real answers for the resident, or former resident, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilman Demone?
I just simply want to quickly echo that. I'm one of the people who've been on here long enough to hear a lot of people come up here about, uh, that these bills, water leaks, so I think that's wonderful. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Any other council comments? Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Appreciate the information. Uh, next, Michelle, for some city officials.
Uh, you, you come, uh.
City's legal.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Michael Wright, uh, city attorney for the city of Terre Haute. I, in preparing for this evening, it was kind of nice to be able to look back and reflect on the past 10 and a half months because, um, you know, much of it has been kind of a whirlwind, but the time that I spent reflecting caused me to think about, you know, what is it that this office is really supposed to accomplish? And what I came up with is work to solve the legal issues confronting the city through collaboration with city departments under the leadership of Mayor Sacbun. And the first thing that we tried to do in coming into office were to implement policies that were, that made common sense and tried to take pressure off of the general fund. You saw an example of that last week at the, with the engineering ordinance, the grass ordinance that we revised earlier this year. All of those policies were geared around Brandon's idea to try and free up funds in the general fund and guide dollars that were for a specific purpose to the departments that were providing that service. So those are policies that are expected to continue with other ordinances you will see coming forward in the coming months and into 2025. Another aspect of our office is monitoring the litigation that the city is involved in. The opioid litigation, the city continues to be plaintiff in the lawsuits surrounding the opioid epidemic that this city and county went through for several years, and we continue to monitor the progress of that, track settlement discussions, and, uh, you know, we'll try to recover any amounts that, that are ultimately available to us by virtue of our involvement in those suits. We also continue to press the litigation surrounding the increased cost of the wastewater treatment project on Prairieton Road. That litigation is ongoing, and, and we hope to receive, uh, a good conclusion at the, at the outset of that case. We also continue to monitor the matters in which the city is a, you know, named defendant, which there are several. We have policies in place through all departments to track that litigation, and, and they're, at any time, any of the council members are welcome to set up a time to discuss those more in detail if there's any interest. more in detail if there's any interest. The primary role of our department, in my opinion, is to work with the other departments to try and achieve their goals, ensuring that they are, you know, at all times remaining within the confines of the law. So we oftentimes, you know, very of, very often, we are working with other departments, working with engineering on the 19th and Beach, and the mayor on 19th and Beach, working with redevelopment on projects that they have going, the hotel downtown, the demolition of the old police station and, and school corporation building. So none of this success is, is ours alone. It's shared amongst the whole city and is being done for the benefit of, of our community. So other things that have been highlights in 2024, we've negotiated a one-year contract with the transit union. We are working negotiations with the fire union. Councilperson Lattermilk has been involved through the process of those negotiations. We conducted an arbitration with the Terre Haute Parks Department, which was the first one of those in my career, which was interesting, and, and the other issues that we've worked to roll out are a new handbook for all city employees. That'll be coming out in January of 2025, and work with the rollout of the change in the health insurance policy through open enrollment and the negotiation with AIM. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but as far as 2024 is concerned, much of what you've heard from other departments, our role has just been supporting them in those projects. And engineering on the trail project, the various modifications to the city code that they've brought forth this year, those are all things that we're proud to have been a part of, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Anyone from the council have any questions?
Madam President.
Councilman Nation?
Thank you, Michael. I yield.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, reports from Board of Public Works and Safety.
There are none.
Reports from standing committees?
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees?
There are none.
Items previously tabled?
There are none.
Tax abatements for confirmation?
There are none.
Items on second reading?
General Ordinance 17, 2024, Amendment to the Code, Chapter 6, Article 5, Division 2, Section 6-96, Garbage and Trash Regulations. You have a proposed amendment before you.
Madam President, Michael Wright, city attorney. What you have before you is an amendment to what was discussed last week with some follow-up that I had with Councilperson Nation. So the only modifications to what had been originally proposed occur in subparagraph B, where we discussed the fact that personal trash receptacles for city residents are provided through the city's contract with Republic Services. And in the previous version of the code, you know, that is not the way it was reflected, and Councilperson Nation made a very good point that this would be an opportune time to go back in and, and correct that issue and deal with another issue that he and the city felt made sense as far as the striking of the last sentence of the following paragraph regarding setting anything outside of a receptacle, allowing anything to be left outside of a receptacle for pickup. In preparation for tonight, I did reach out to Karam Nassar, the director of Solid Waste District, and, and verified that, you know, under our agreement, Republic, they will not get out of the vehicle. Their obligation is to pick up what is in the containers. So I believe that further confirms the good sense behind the removal of that language.
At this time, we'll ask anyone from the public, do they have comments on General Ordinance Number 17, 2024?
Donald Hyde, 14th Limb, Upper Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. I don't throw away that much trash, but there are times when the neighbors I have have piled up trash beside their trash container, and I've seen sometimes it's gone and sometimes it's not gone. I think the one thing that this city council can do, the gentleman can do, is inform every citizen of the city of Terre Haute that that's exactly what they're going to do. They're only going to pick up the trash that's in the trash cans, and anything beside the trash can, they're going to leave it alone. Whether I agree with that or I don't agree with that, and by the way, I don't know one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Anyone else? State your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Deborah Considine, 1625 South 11th Street, Terre Haute. I do have a couple of questions, and I also have maybe an unforeseen consequence of this, and with the unforeseen consequence, I don't have a good answer. First of all, I'd like to address a point Mr. Hyde had last week about whose responsibility if the container is, isn't up to shape. And he gave residential examples, but I did find one in town where the top is bent. So is that Republic's responsibility to take care of that, or would they be fined, or would the person who uses the container be fined? Okay, my second question, how do you define commercial and industrial containers? Is it the type of container or where the container is? And I'm going to get, going back to this example, this is not at either a commercial or industrial site. And then that would also apply, there are also residential sites that use trash bins as well. And I guess my unforeseen consequence comes from experience I had and also observed around town. I would say, one of the things I did observe it around town is there are a lot of containers that comply with what is proposed in the amendment. But the problem with some of them is they're hard to use, and there are a lot of doors that are open on the trash bins. And trying to be a good citizen, I tried to close one, and I was not able to. Because of the way, of the ergonomics of it, I finally figured out how to do that, but it would take me going directly under the lid and pushing it up with both hands. And there was one, I almost did that with today, but then I thought, maybe somebody might not be able to open it back up. And so that's kind of why I left it the way it was. And I also had an experience with, like, a similar trash can when they first had them over at the solid waste site at the street department, that I'm infusely on air having difficulty lifting up that type of lid. And so I don't, again, I don't have an answer to that, but that might be, make it more difficult for people to use such a trash container. Thank you for your time.
As to the first question, I, I think the ordinance down at the bottom specifies that it applies, you know, to all classifications of building structures. And the only differentiation that was attempted in that provision of the proposed amendment was to break out the difference between the personal portable totes, containers that are provided for residential services from commercial, industrial, or the designated residential that is required to have dumpsters, which there are. So I don't, I don't know what classification she could be referring to that's not commercial or industrial or residential, but, you know, that, I think that pretty well covers the spectrum of the properties that we're talking about here. And as to the second issue, the owner of the building is who the code applies to, not Republic. So Republic is who has an agreement with the owner of that building for trash removal services. They would just need to, the owner would need to communicate with Republic on the fact that their can, their container is out of code, and, yeah, there very well could be a cost associated with that, but that would be between that customer and Republic.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I want to comment that that picture is taken not to describe it specifically at a nonprofit organization.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's, and I'm not trying to, you know, parse hairs here, but that's not a classification under zoning, or, I mean, that's the, that would be a commercial. I, I'm guessing that's some sort of C designation property, so not trying, but, yeah. I think that's probably the confusion, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, any other public comments? We'll close public comments and open council discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Nation?
Michael, thank you for updating this pursuant to our conversation last week. This is a great example of the good work that Michael Wright and his office do. They're in the background in support, in this case, of the work of the city council. So anyway, if there's no further discussion, I move that we, I move for approval of, I'm sorry, I move to amend General Ordinance 17, 2024 as presented.
Second. We have a motion to amend General Ordinance 17, 2024 as presented, made by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Hinton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? General Ordinance 17, 2024 is amended as presented.
Madam President.
Councilman Nation?
If there's no further discussion, I move for approval of General Ordinance Number 17, 2024 as amended.
Second. We have a motion to approve General Ordinance 17, 2024 as amended, made by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Hinton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? General Ordinance 17, 2024 is approved as presented.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael. Michelle?
Special Ordinance 37, 2024, rezoning a property located at 1250 Locust Street. Area planning gave it favorable with conditions recommendation.
Petitioner?
Good evening, Madam President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shagley, and I'm with the Law Firm of Wright, Shagley &amp; Lowery. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of A&amp;A Property. They are the entity that acquired what we probably all know as either Chauncey Rose School or the Boys and Girls Club. For some, Gersmeyer School. As you may recall, the school corporation gave it to the Boys and Girls Club several years ago, and in the recent years, the Boys and Girls Club has moved out. As it turns out, that is a very expensive building to maintain and to repair, and it was not economical for the Boys and Girls Club, so they have moved to a new facility. That resulted in the Boys and Girls Club selling the property, and, thank you, by the way, Ken, Ken, Councilperson Hinton, resulting in the Boys and Girls Club putting it out for bid, so to speak, on people that'd be interested in purchasing the property. A&amp;A Property Group was successful in that proposition, and what they're wanting to do is rezone this property that's currently zoned R2 to R3. And the original purpose of that was to build 50 duplexes, or 100 units. It is my client's desire to increase the housing in our community by 100 units. Since the filing of this petition for rezoning, the petitioner has been able to acquire additional property and is now in his intentions to build 50 single-family homes instead of duplexes on this property. Basically the same layout as you see in the site plan, except for that it's going to be 50 single-family homes. I've had some questions, both from members at this table and from members of the community with regard to the historical nature of, of the remaining gym. On Monday at 1:30, a representative from A&amp;A Property and myself is meeting individuals from the alumni group and of Gersmeyer and another, I want to, I don't have it written down for me, the, it's a, another museum-type group. And the purpose of that is to, although some items have already been removed from the building, the purpose of that is to make sure that if there's anything in that building those groups want, it's, it's be taken out. Because eventually, not necessarily in the first phase, but eventually that building will come down because it is not economically feasible to even run the building, much less bring it up to code and to, to secure the building. Between the foundation, the roof, and everything in between, it is an expensive venture just to bring it up to code. As a result, unfortunately, the building will have to come down, but the, the owner understands the history of it and wants to make sure that they can preserve everything they can for the groups that are interested in the preservation of that building. And the, the, this property is going to be that athletic village at Gersmeyer. So he understands the significance of it and intends to try to keep the, the history, you know, something at least within the name going forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on Special Ordinance 37, 2024?
Donald Hyde, and I listened to this entire comment, and I have one basic question, and I cannot comment without understanding what I'm commenting about. You were describing, at least in my mind, I believe, I was looking at two different places. Now, I'm not sure where I'm looking at. Could you explain exactly where the property is and what it once was?
Absolutely. I, I followed asked for not making that clear in my initial presentation.
I apologize for not making that clear in my initial presentation. This is the former Chauncey Rose School at Locust and 13th Street.
I thought that might have been it, but I didn't know that the Boys Club had it. I apologize for the confusion. The reason I say this is I'm understanding, I could be wrong about this, I don't know. Isn't the Boys Club now?
At Meadow School?
At Meadow School.
Correct.
See, that's why.
Yeah, it is confusing.
All right.
I'm with you, Mr. Hyde.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wish to comment on Special Ordinance 37, 2024? All right, I'll close public comments and open council discussion.
Madam President.
Counselman Dinkle.
Will these be, now that you're changing this to single-family homes, will they be rented or owned?
The initial thought was to rent them, but there is, as you know, there is a lot of housing going on right now. And today, there's a little bit of a slowness on some of the sales. So, you know, we're looking at a construction period over the next nine months. So at this point, based upon today's market, probably would go to rent unless the market changes and there's more of a desire for sale. It's not off the table to sell, and that's why we're, the subject is probably that way.
So that, yeah, that's what I'm looking at, if it's going to be a single-family home, whether it truly needed to go to an R3 from an R2.
That's more for setbacks.
Sure.
And utilization of the property to the best that we could find.
All right. Thank you. I yield.
Any other council discussion? Counselman Nation.
Richard, as I look at the site plan for this, I note that the property that we're being asked to rezone is basically an L shape, and there's a big chunk left out of it. That chunk is where the historic gym is and then the monument out at the corner of 13th and Locust. Is it your intention to, or your client's intention, to come back and ask for a different zoning category on that? Or do you know what the plan is?
Yes, we'll have to come back again for that spot. There's a, there's a desire to create a athletic facility at that spot, but that is, you know, we got to build some houses, sell some houses before that becomes a reality.
As I, you know, I'm very familiar with this site, and now it's a great big field. That's what it's behaved as for years. There are a couple of tenants courts. Of course, there's the gym that you mentioned. And then there's the former industrial arts building at the northwest corner of the property, which, back when I was a student at Chauncey Rose Middle School, was where I took shop class. That's a building that is left over from the original Rose Poly Institute before Rose Holman moved out east, and it's the last remaining building, I think, from that previous iteration of what's now Rose Holman. You know, I'm sad to see both of these buildings on the chopping block, the planned demolition of these buildings, but that's not what we're being asked to consider here. What we are being asked to consider is the site plan, among other factors. And I note that there's a marked increase with 50 single-family homes in impermeable surfaces that'll be crammed onto this property. Roofs, drive approaches, driveways, sidewalks, curb cuts. Can you talk a little bit about the drainage plan for this project?
I am not aware that the drainage plan's been finalized at this time, so I can't speak. Though I obviously have to build everything to code and follow local, state and federal regulations with regard to control their water.
Over the years, what has evolved in these kinds of projects is that they're required to keep all of their drainage on site, and they can't go into the storm sewer, you know, along 13th Street or along Lafayette. And to me, just as a layperson, albeit one with a lot of experience in looking at this kind of stuff, I wonder what the strategy is going to be. Do you, have you had any of those conversations with city engineering or with your client?
I have not.
I guess, in the absence of those conversations, I would express concern about the idea of putting a detention pond at the corner of 13th and Locust.
There will not be a detention pond at the corner of 13th and Locust.
How do we know that with what I see in front of me? That shows no detention pond, that shows no drainage plan, that shows no plan for 13th and Locust.
Every discussion I've had is there's not going to be a detention pond at 13th and Locust. That's too, I mean, that's, that's not going to happen.
Good.
Yeah. And as you know, there's multiple ways of handling your stormwater. And we've got an experienced developer who's done buildings all around our community, and he is, he's willing to invest $15 million in this spot and make it something that not only is he proud of, but our community is proud of.
Sure.
And keep in mind, too, that, you know, this was a competitive process that he was in to get this property, and the Boys and Girls Club approved his project over all the other ones, and also had to go through the school board because of the clause of when they gave it to the Boys and Girls Club. So this, so his plans and his ideas of doing housing here has been reviewed by, and approved by many different groups. And I'm not going to say this is the best plan that came out of their process of finding, but this is the one that they all chose and have approved.
Thank you. I yield.
All right. This time, I entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Counselman DeVon.
If there be no discussion, I move that we pass Special Ordinance 37, 2024.
We have a motion on the floor to approve Special Ordinance 37, 2024, made by Councilwoman DeVon, seconded by Councilwoman Loudermilk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That's six to one. Michelle? Is that what you're counting? That's what we need, right? So we, Special Ordinance 37, 2024 is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michelle?
Resolution 27, 2024, transfer of $107,030 in the information technology budget.
Petitioner, welcome.
Welcome. Madam President, Council, Larry Wetnite, CIO, first time I've been before you, so this will be a treat for me. The request is to move, you know, we have an excess amount in certain areas of our budget, we want to transfer it over primarily to PC procurement and licensing. And the primary reason is, roughly six weeks ago, we began to look forward, and looking at the month of October of next year, Windows 10 goes end of support, which we have a number of PCs throughout the city landscape, as well as Office 2016 goes end of support. So that's, that would be a security challenge for us. And so this puts us in a great place to where we can begin, we can procure this year, and of course, as we roll into next year's budget, we can continue on with procuring and getting these systems rolled out with updated software. And so that's the primary reason why we're asking for the request, just to transfer within the budget over to those two areas.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to comment on Resolution 27, 2024?
Donald Wayne Hyde, 1411 Public Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. Since not everybody has a doctorate degree in economics, sir, I wish you would explain to me exactly what you intend to do by giving us a verbal example of it.
Sure. No, no problem, Mr. Hyde. So being the IT person, we manage all the IT equipment throughout the city, the city assets. And so, so we have some equipment that's become dated, and we're not able to upgrade it, and unfortunately, the.
I get what you mean.
Okay, okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment? I'll close public comments and open council discussion.
Madam President.
Counselman Dinkle.
Larry, as somebody who has also had a meeting this week about Windows 10 end-of-life plans, I want to commend you for this because it's, I think it's going to hit a lot of businesses unexpectedly. I mean, we're still operating on Windows 10 across our entire institution and have to replace roughly 40% of our stock in the next year. So I just commend you for looking ahead and making plans so we don't get caught in it, and continuing to look to upgrade city technology.
Thank you, Councilperson Dinkle.
I yield.
Madam President.
Counselwoman Loudermilk? Counselwoman Loudermilk, I apologize.
That's okay. Mr. Wright, I'd just like to thank you for finding it within your budget. I'm not quite sure. We must have had some positions not filled the whole year, maybe, but I commend you for finding it inside your budget and being able to make the tringot spurn.
Thank you, Councilperson Loudermilk.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Counselman Nation.
Welcome aboard, Larry.
Thank you.
I appreciate the fact that this is your first meeting here, and I look forward to seeing you again in the future. And if there's no more discussion, I move for approval of Resolution Number 27, 2020.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 27, 2024, made by Counselman Nation, seconded by Counselman Dinkle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 27, 2024 is approved.
Thank you, counsel.
Madam President, if there's no further discussion, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to adjourn, made by Counselman Dinkle, seconded by Counselwoman Loudermilk. All those in favor?
Aye.